All right, we can go ahead and start.
Great, thank you, Goyce. The City of Monteserino City Council Meeting for April 21st, 2020 is now called to order.
And Mayor, if I may, I have to cover some ground rules, mostly COVID-19 related. So I will begin by saying, council member staff and meeting participants, thank you for joining us this evening for the April 21st, 2020, Monteserino City Council Meeting. Prior to roll call, I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, City Council is being conducted pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and a recent executive order issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. Ordinarily, the Brown Act sets strict rules for teleconferencing. It requires that each teleconference location be identified in the notice and agenda. That is accessible to the public, that members of the public be allowed to address the council from that location, that the agenda be posted at that location, that at least one member be here in the council chambers, and that at least a quorum of the council be participating from within Monteserino. The governor's executive order has suspended those rules. The executive order does require that we continue to notice meetings in advance and that we provide members of the public an opportunity to offer public comment. And regarding the public comment, we have some House rules here. Before our meeting is called to order, I'd like to point out a few things to assist council member staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, please keep your microphones muted until you wish to speak. Otherwise, you'll have what's called a hot mic. At the top left is a presenter chat. Council members should use this to report technical problems such as an inability to hear. At the top left, there is also an attendee chat. This is for the public to report technical problems. For the public to comment under oral communications on any agenda item, at the top center of the screen, there is a caption box where comments limited to 500 words can be submitted and will be read into the record. This limit is set to adhere to the typical three-minute time allowance. Only attendees using the application can submit questions. Participation from a telephone will allow for listening only and does not allow for any feedback. And finally, because we are not all in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by a roll call vote. And if the mayor would now like to call the meeting to order, we are ready for that step. And we are ready for the city clerk to call roll.
Okay, thank you. Let me begin with Councilmember Alahi.
Present.
Councilmember Labouvet.
Present.
Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Turner.
Yeah, present.
Mayor Protem Luthold.
Present.
Mayor Lawler.
Present.
Thank you.
In lieu of the pledge of allegiance to the flag, I'd like to thank our essential workers and healthcare providers on the front lines of this crisis. I'd also like to take a moment to welcome our deputy city clerk, Goyce Gonzalez-Langarica. We are very happy to have you here, so thank you, Goyce.
Thank you, Mayor Lawler.
All right, moving on, we have orders of the day. There are no changes to the orders of the day. Oral communications. Goyce, I believe we have a member of the public wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda. We have an email from Brian Mechachuck.
Sorry about that. Okay, so we do have a letter that came in here from resident Brian Mechachuck, and it reads, "Mayor Lawler and City Council Members. Currently residential construction work hours in Monteserino are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with construction prohibited on Sundays and holidays. Under the most recent Santa Clara County order, residential constructions, with some limitations, is prohibited. I ask that the City of Monteserino consider the following. When Santa Clara County authorizes residential construction activities to continue, the City of Monteserino should allow for a temporary of 120 days extension of construction hours. The City of Monteserino could pass a temporary regulation for construction to start at 7:00 a.m. on Monday to Saturday, with ending times remaining unchanged. This temporary extension of construction at work hours would benefit, one, residents of Monteserino with construction projects underway, and two, construction workers who are furloughed today. The shelter-in-place order has put almost all residential remodeling and construction projects on hold, drawing out the timelines for residents in Monteserino. Importantly, many construction workers that live from paycheck to paycheck are now on unemployment and other public assistance. There are many issues with the ideal worker, not the least of which is often domestic violence. I have spoken with a number of contractors that have projects underway or have completed projects in the City of Monteserino, and they are unanimous in stating that the temporary extension of construction work hours in the morning would be helpful to their customers/clients, their workers, and their subcontractors. They all understand that the extension would only occur when the Santa Clara County authorizes construction to resume and that they must follow any new requirements, for example, social distancing, maximum number of people per site, additional handwashing facilities, daily temperature reading, et cetera. While some Monteserino residents will complain regarding noise and construction activity starting at 7:00 a.m., the City of Monteserino has been very quiet since residential constructions ceased on April 1st, 2020. I believe that the temporary extension allowing constructions to start at 7:00 a.m. would explicitly show that the City of Monteserino cares. Please note that the extending construction hours is dependent on contractors following the Santa Clara County requirements and does not cost the City of Monteserino any additional cost. Again, I ask that the City Council consider a temporary 120-day extension of construction hours. Thank you, best regards, Brian."
Thank you, Goyce. I believe we have another member of the public who has submitted a question just online. From Adi Noyen.
Oh, yes, I see here. Okay, so, okay, comment part two belongs. Okay, so, "All Monteserino residents..." So which one is the first part? That one, right? "All Monteserino residents should sit up and take notice of how much our City Council has accomplished in the past year. Getting rid of the mayor for no good reason was just the beginning. How could this be topped? By sowing so much discontent that the city staff decided to unionize for the first time in Monteserino's 60-year history, by creating so toxic a workplace environment that the city attorney, city manager, building official, and city clerk all resigned. Rowena Turner, Sean Luthold, Liz Lawler, and Daniel Labouvet, please all stand up and take a bow for your truly exceptional work. It is doubtful that any other group of Monteserino residents could have done this... You have done what you have... things you have done, sorry. You deserve to be recognized and remembered in the annals of the Monteserino history for your boldly taking a new path, one unencumbered by the property of our commonly accepted behavior. We are on the edge of our seats anxiously to see our next extraordinary exploits."
Is that it?
Okay. That's it, yeah.
All right, thank you, Goyce. Okay, we shall move on. I don't think we have any communications that I know of. So moving on to the consent calendar. Before we make a motion to approve the consent calendar, are there any council member questions or comments?
I do have a question, Sean Luthold here. And that was simply an observation, if I read it correctly, on item four. I was looking at the revenue and expenditure report. And this time, I did not see anything calling out any exceptions or items of note. And in some of the previous versions, we had that. I just wanted to mention that I do like that being included. So if the city manager, working with the finance people, have the opportunity to reinsert that, whether it's considered an executive summary or notes at the end, just to comment about anything that is running way ahead of schedule or is an unusual expenditure or an unusual savings, it's nice to see that summarized. So that's, I just wanted to offer that comment.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We will make sure we include that in the future.
So, Councilmember Labouvet, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to excuse myself from items number five and six. And I understand I can do that without leaving the room. So my vote would be excluded on items number five and six from the consent vote based on the fact that my home is within the Rose Andrews lighting district.
Okay, thank you. So I guess moving forward, I would say, Mr. Leonartis, if this is right, or Sergio, if this is right, a motion to approve items one through four and seven.
Should we do...
Alternatively, the, you know, the motion can be approved the entire consent calendar. And it sounds like Councilmember Labouvet has announced his intention to recuse himself from voting on items five and six. If that's correct, Councilmember Labouvet, then we can record that you will be abstaining from voting on those matters.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion. Sean Luthold.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Then, Goyce, I think we'll do a roll call vote.
Okay, so we have Councilmember Alahi.
Yes.
Councilmember Labouvet. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Luthold?
Yes.
And Mayor Lawler?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, Goyce, I'll register a yes on the non-excluded items.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. There are no public... there's no public hearing at this time, so we will move to unfinished business. Item eight. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Leonartis.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is our, essentially, the status of the local emergency and consideration of terminating the local emergency. We are performing a verbal report at every council meeting. And I will begin my report by saying, "Today, we sent out our weekly correspondence e-blasts to our community, including resources covering financial assistance, mental health resources, coping, frequently asked questions, supporting children, a message from our mayor, shelter-in-place directive, and other essential information." As we are all well aware, City Hall remains closed except for essential services, and that includes items on our council's agenda. We are only performing essential council business items. At the county level, they are reminding us not to relax on social distancing. It is very tempting, the weather is beautiful, lots of people outdoors, but we should not ease up because social distancing is designed, not just to protect oneself, but to protect everyone else we encounter. Essential workers in the hospitals, the grocery stores, the delivery people, public safety, those who are keeping us safe during this time. We must return the favor and keep them safe by not relaxing on social distancing. In Santa Clara County, residents are encouraged to wear masks when out in the public, but currently masks are not required by law. But we are being encouraged. Now, we get into the report at the county level. Eighty-eight Santa Clara County residents have perished from COVID-19. There have been 1,946 cases out of 19,928 tested, which is about a 10% confirmed cases out of those tested. So 90% who were tested were not... did not have COVID-19. In Monteserino, COVID-19 positive cases are being reported as less than 10. The way the county does this is they report any number below 10 as less than 10. So Monteserino could have zero, we could have nine, we could have one or two, or any number in between. We don't really know the exact number. I know of no known cases in Monteserino of COVID-19. Our city website has a direct feed to the Santa Clara County Department of Health. I want to encourage residents to use our city website. This is a rich resource, the Santa Clara Department of Public Health, and it has updated information on COVID-19 and all the related impacts, located right at monteserino.org. And this concludes my report. We are, again, under shelter-in-place until May 3rd at this time, so we should probably continue. My recommendation would be to continue the local emergency status we are in now, our emergency proclamation as it is. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Leonartis. Do we have any questions? Everything's good? Okay.
Yeah, I just had a comment. I think the county and the state have done a great job at doing the best under the coronavirus nightmare that we have. There is some consideration that masks should also be made mandatory in Santa Clara County. I know they are in San Francisco. So this is maybe something that we should look at and bring it up for further discussion later on, whether we need to go in that direction or not. But thank you, Steve, for the job and all the work that the mayor is also doing in this respect as far as keeping everybody informed, so that's good.
Thank you, Councilmember Alahi.
Thank you, Councilmember Alahi. Okay, moving on to new business. Item number nine, council consideration of a special one-time grant to West Valley Community Services for COVID-19-related housing assistance needs in the amount of $5,000. Mr. Leonartis, you have a verbal report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you know, you and I were both on a phone call about two weeks ago, and the purpose was the West Valley mayors and managers discussing a one-time special grant for housing assistance to West Valley Community Services for COVID-19 housing relief. Cupertino is considering a $50,000 grant. Los Gatos voted at their last meeting to award $10,000 as a direct grant. Saratoga and Campbell, I believe, are discussing it this evening as well as we are. And we may have more information at our mayors and managers' meeting tomorrow because this topic is on the agenda, so I'm sure we will. But the idea is to get all five West Valley cities, or four cities in one town, Los Gatos, all five West Valley partners to contribute funds and pool a lump sum and possibly receive a matching grant from the housing trust to double the donation. So just an example of what we talked about, Cupertino puts in 50, Los Gatos 10, Campbell, Saratoga, Monteserino. If we come up with 100 to 120,000, and the housing trust doubles it, we would have 200 to 240,000. And it was discussed that the funds would be, again, a one-time grant, and it's outside of our newly adopted grants process. So on our May 19th meeting, we will be considering grants for those applicants who filled out our online application online. West Valley Community Service, because if you, if council considered this grant this evening, would not be excluded from that process either. They could come back and still be part of that process. This is independent of that whole process, and this is primarily just to help with housing assistance needs for COVID-19. The funds will be pooled. They would not be specific to any one city, which means that, in other words, if Cupertino puts in $50,000, they're $50,000 if the need is in, you know, Saratoga or Campbell. That money gets dispersed where it's needed according to what West Valley Community Service sees as the most urgent need. There would be a stipulation potentially that says the funds will be used for housing assistance and not for administration costs. So I think that was a concern of council and Cupertino when they were looking at contributing the $50,000. They were concerned, well, what if we give $50,000 and percentage, 25% of that $50,000 goes to administration costs? We would not like to see that. We would like to see all the money go to the housing assistance. So that was part of the discussion. There was also part of the discussion which mentioned $2,500 being about the average amount of funds needed to help a typical family facing an eviction or other housing-related stress. So for instance, Los Gatos, they put in $10,000. That $2,500 essentially per family, they essentially helped four families out of a, out of a big jam with the $10,000 grant. That's the average amount it would help. My suggestion to council at this time would be to consider offering to the pool. Remember, this is a pool, and we are the smallest member in the pool. We have the smallest budget, we have the smallest population. I would consider offering a number such as $5,000. This, again, would not exclude West Valley services from applying for and potentially receiving a future CBO grant at our May, you know, by our May 1st deadline. At our May 19th meeting, we will be deciding. But it would be an opportunity for us to show that we want to participate in helping those during these tough times without essentially breaking our budget. And that concludes my, my report. I'm open for questions on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonartis. For council member questions and comments, I will call on you alphabetically, starting with Councilmember Alahi.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a pretty good organization. They've done a lot of good work over the years and have been serving the community fairly well. I don't know what their administrative percentage of the cost is or what their overhead is. I think the $50,000 amount seems to be reasonable at this point in time to proceed with it because the funds are needed more rather than later. And obviously, if they come up for another grant application, we can consider that they've already received $5,000 and take that into account before we give them any more funds. But I would, I would support the application.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Alahi. Councilmember Labouvet, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that this was brought forward by the city manager and you, Mayor Lawler, and, and I think that we should follow the lead of the other cities and go forward with this. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Luthold?
Yeah, so I do think this sounds like a good program and something that we should be supportive of and would like to see it go forward as well.
Great. And Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I support this.
Great. Then do we have a motion to approve council consideration of a special one-time grant to West Valley Community Services for COVID-19-related housing assistance needs in the amount of $5,000?
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Great. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Third, fourth. All right, Goyce, roll call, roll please.
Yes, Councilmember Alahi?
Yes.
Councilmember Labouvet?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Luthold?
Yes.
And Mayor Lawler?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I do have one quick question for our attorney. I did not open a public hearing for this item, was I supposed to?
For the grant?
Yes.
No. No, it's just a regular agenda item. It doesn't require any special notice to the public or, you know, opportunity to... I mean, we're, oh, the question of whether or not we have any public comment on this agenda item. I guess we probably should ask the clerk, do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
Sure. Goyce, do we have any comments on this?
No comments.
Okay, great, thank you.
I, then I think we're fine.
Okay, super. Moving on to committee and commission reports, are there any council members with committee or commission reports? Zoom, et cetera? Nope?
Yeah, I do want to report on Silicon, Silicon Valley Clean Energy. I did attend the meeting last week, and the issue always is as to the supply of clean energy in this environment and maintaining a discount. Silicon Valley maintains a 4% discount to PJNE rates for its customers, and it's going to continue doing that. They're also allocating about $10 million for programs to address customer relief and commuter resilience. There might be funds available for the proceeds also, so that may be something we need to look at. And they're engaged in a 40-megawatt solar project with another company to make sure that we have enough clean energy going on. So all in all, I think our clean energy supply should seem to be in good shape, and we should be good.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Alahi. Moving on to council member comments. Any comments, any council member?
Yes, I do have a comment. I just wanted to let you council know that I received two letters from Jack Lucas. And let me read to you, I combined both letters, so let me read them to you. The first one says, "Kudos and congratulations to the council and to the staff on publishing the Peaceful Mountain Monitor. That has to be the best community newsletter that the city has mailed out to its residents since I have lived here. The fascinating facts article are truly fascinating. Do you know if the League of California Cities ever issues awards for city newsletters? On the same page, new Monteserino website. Under the leadership of newly appointed city manager Steve Leonartis, this goal was achieved and the new website is up and running. Everything that you have always wanted to know about that oasis in the heart of Silicon Valley may be found on the website. That is as impressive as the newsletter." And then he, his next letter says, "The Xena Rinconada sign is still standing tall and straight. I still remember former city manager Don Wimberly reminding me, when I came to the council, how important it was for city managers to scratch in the dirt." So that came from Jack Lucas. I also got a text message from Phil Levine, also saying that our staff did a good job on the newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. Are there any other comments at this time? Okay, we'll move on to...
I'll make one comment.
Okay.
Recognized?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Leonartis for sending around all of these detailed status reports on a weekly basis and including all of the work that he's doing. For me, it just goes over and above Call of Duty. I mean, he's really taking it upon himself to clean up the city hall and repair all of the items that have been sorely in need of repair for so many years, especially the ones that kind of relate to public safety. We saw pictures of the repair of the, of the, you know, walking dots on... the repair of the, of the, you know, walking dots on Highway 9 in front of the, of the, of the post office area. That fell into disrepair, and I even believe there might have been a lawsuit around that at some point. So thank you for fixing that. Thank you for cleaning up the, the lighting and the inside interior cracks and walls, and now you're attacking the attic and the space behind the air conditioners and even the garage that I remember when I was putting away things for the picnic, that garage was just really a mess. And so I'm looking forward to seeing your work and how that's all straightened up and and things are really starting to operate in a military fashion, so appreciate all the hard work and, and kudos for for really getting things done and rolling up your sleeves. The community really appreciates all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I enjoy that stuff. So thank you. I, I'm touched by the comments, but thank you.
Great. Thank you for those comments. Moving on to city manager's report. Steve, do you have anything else? Mr. Leonartis, I should say, do you have anything else to report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lawler. I would again like to recognize our deputy city clerk this evening, Glouise Gonzalez-Langa Rica. It's Glouise's first meeting performing the duties of the city clerk. She's done a great job, so thank you this evening, Glouise. And I also want to just mention briefly, we received Drive 25 stickers, the ones that we put on the trash bins to inform whether you're in your car, your motorcycle, walking, doing whatever, out on the streets of Montessorino, just to look out for residents, look out for the kids, and be safe. So you could come to City Hall when we reopen and pick one up. You can email us, contact us, call us. I'll deliver it to your house. Anybody who would like a Drive 25 sticker for their trash or recycling bin they put out weekly, I'm happy to get it to you one way or another. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Leonartis. Moving on to our final section, future agenda items. I believe council member or Mayor Protem Luthold has an item for the future agenda?
Yeah, I wanted to, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to actually bring up two, two issues related to future agenda items. First, I, if everyone is in agreement, would like to see Citizen Mechachuck's issue brought forward for public consideration, comment, and come up on an agenda item. Certainly something that is worth considering and determining whether people are supportive of that in general on those extended hours. I do know that contractors like to work early. And yet, I know there are certainly plenty of citizens who don't like to have loud noises early. So I think that is a discussion that we should have and bring forward on a future agenda close to when we may be reopening. So it may be something that we want to agendize if we know that date in advance, or maybe even agendize on a rolling basis or, or even early and start getting some public comment on the issue. So that's one item that I would bring up for consideration for future agenda items if others are interested in it. The second comment I wanted to make related to future agenda items are for the grant participants and the applicants that may be making grants. I know those are normally presented to us, and people are invited to give a brief presentation and answer questions as well. I don't know if our technology supports having video presentations and live interaction with the grantee, the grant applicants. But if we are able to do that and set it up so that everyone could do that, that would be great. Otherwise, we couldn't come up with some sort of a substitute if we're still under shelter-in-place as we come towards those meetings.
Okay. Thank you, Protem Luthold. Does anybody else have an item for a future agenda?
Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember? Are you, are we good?
I, I think it's a good, good idea to go ahead and agendize it. Probably 16 days from today would be good. I don't know if we can do anything, if this COVID is going to be lifted by that time. But it, it's good to let the city know that this is happening so they can put in, give us their words of wisdom as to whether they're okay with the 7 o'clock starting time or not.
Okay, sounds good. Then, then I suppose that hopefully that will be on the next agenda.
Yes, Mayor, we will definitely add that to a future agenda. I would just like to get some clarification from Mr. Rudin if that would be considered as an essential business item under the shelter, or if we would have to wait for the, or rather, the state order? Or would that item be something we can consider in a consent? No, I guess we couldn't put it in consent because we run public discussion on it. We probably wanted to be a public hearing.
And I will send some advice to the council members and to the city manager in a less public setting. But, you know, the, the county's shelter-in-place order basically provides that at this point, we should really be functioning to maintain essential government functions. And one of the issues in, in this particular instance is that, you know, the request for a temporary modification to the restrictions in the Montessorino Municipal Code related, the only restrictions we have are related to outside construction activities that require a city permit and for the most part involve use of heavy machinery. And those hours are, I believe, right now, starting at 8 o'clock. Making a modification to the city code would need to happen via ordinance. So I will sort of advise us to what that process will look like to the council. So, you know, look out for that.
Okay, thank you, Sergio. Councilmember Turner, do you have a comment?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to Glouise for, for being with us tonight and doing the job for covering for Andrea.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner.
All right. Well, thank you. Yes, I echo that as well. Thank you, Glouise, for being here tonight and running a great meeting. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
And at this point, I think we're ready to adjourn the City of Montessorino City Council meeting for April 21st, 2020 at 7:40 PM. Our next meeting will be May 5th, 2020. All right.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care, guys. Good night.
Good night.